Are we ready to learn your orders? Good morning, everyone. It is Friday, February the 10th, 1:33 at 7:01 a.m. And this is the meeting of the Olds Public School Board, a regular February 23 meeting. We're meeting in honor of Career Tech Ed Month here at the Southeast Region Career Technology Center building in Olks. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance, then we're gonna adjust the agenda a little bit. So let's rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I thought way ago.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. What I'd like to do with the agenda is we'll move regular meeting item E, Staff Spotlight, to the beginning. And are there any other additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda with that change? I'm welcome to approve that change and the agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Nagel seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Oppose say no. Motion passes and I will welcome all visitors here. Nobody's really a visitor because you're all part of the family of Olks Public Schools and Southeast Region Career Technology Center. And with that, we will move on to the Staff Spotlight, which features the Sisters. Here at the Southeast Region Career Technology Center. Is anybody on? Good morning. I think you are. Yeah. Ask Mrs. Kelly if she can hear us. Can you hear us? Okay.
I can see him.
All right. So I'm Anna Kemer, I teach culinary arts and FCLA here at the Leadership Center. So and part of our core work here, I offer culinary one and two, which is general culinary education in first and second year of project. And I also teach baking and pastry science, specializing in baked products. While there's year-long classes offered 10 through 12 grade. I also have seventh, eighth, and junior high, so all seventh graders come out here who are basically the quarter. And they have a rotation with me and then they rotate with Art and then Mr. Rindler for the egg rotation for a semester. And then I also teach egg science in ninth grade A in the afternoon, both of which are year-long classes. The egg science, they design bread for. And the ninth grade A, we teach each semester during the night because there's a lot of them and they are ninth graders. As a part of our culinary program in FCLA here, FCLA is family, we're community leaders of America. So every child that's in culinary one and two and baking, I enroll them in FCLA, kind of like how FFAE works where everyone is enrolled. Whether they do something or not is kind of up to them. I do require them to do some contests, one in the spring, one in the fall, the Life Sparks Dollar Bowl, which kind of encompasses all of their ninth through 12 education as a whole. And then they have a math challenge, online test in the spring. If students want, they compete to start, I'm just gonna cut that off Wednesday. So Megan Mallory did hospitality tours on the recreation last year and made the top 10 at national, so we got taken to California. We just qualified all six of them, completed on Wednesday, our state is April. There's a three-day state convention similar to DECA. And then from there on, they can qualify for national district center this year. So as a part of my instruction here culinary, I hope that we teach a lot of life skills and you're becoming yourself, so there's just new needs. So I also have two independent secondary girls, one of them's making a quilt right now, so it kind of filters to that senior level. If you want something more, if you take it what I offer, you can have that independent study, favorite's making a quilt. She made this wall hanging, put a small applique for Miss Kelsey earlier in the daycare. And then we also offer some catering. So right now, last phase, we've been making 300 cookies for JQ, so some of you might be getting cookies. And we have our manual cupcakes baked next week during FCLA, we have our lovely 900 cupcakes. So everyone get cupcakes in town for the most part. You have to look at the mini board if you couldn't see it, you didn't have like the budget. I'm Mrs. Johnson and I have the marketing, entrepreneurship, sports marketing and principal of marketing classes out here at the center. Just diving into a little bit of what we do, entrepreneurship actually just completed through a part of a DECA project. Their financial reality simulation, so they had a week of instruction on debit versus credit, how to write checks, how to balance, unregister, where to store your money, how to save your money. And then on the last day of that week, I had three DECA numbers come in and we did a full simulation of this one here with 12 different booths in the community, housing to car insurance to choosing a car and all those even expenses you might have in your everyday life. So that was a really fun one we just got completed. And then actually Elliot Beth and Brett are taking that to state in March as their project. Aside from that entrepreneurship, we always have something called the Market Day in the spring, so they'll be coming up in a month or so in which they pretty much create their own business plan for their own business idea. So then they actually bring that product to fruition and they are able to sell it to classmates, community members, whoever comes in on that market day. Any of the money they make, they get as a profit, so it's a nice little incentive for them. They get to go through the experience, it could be in a business loan if they need it, all the promotion that comes with that product and then the actual selling process on Market Day. Other than that, aside from those classes, I also have DECA. And we just finally got our, let's see, our tactile little wall signs out of the school. So if you're out of school wondering what those are, that was from a DECA project last year called Keep the Mind in Mind. And hopefully this spring they'll get their playground equipment up and then it'll be forward in March is when our state contest is. And so far, about 18 students registered for that, so we'll be excited to see how we do at state. Oh, I guess we have the egg part of Mr. Rinder is gone at the line to get up last night for that contest. He's offering junior high classes as well, he has candy science. And then seventh grade A and egg food science in the afternoon, along with teaching the other half of the ninth grader. And advising part of the FFA, I'm still advising part of the FFA as well in addition to FCLA. And then we have Mr. Anderson teaching auto in the morning, who's in words teaching health careers, people struggle in the afternoon, so there's five left out here.
So all of our Olks Public School students are required to come up here as part of their geneified curriculum, et cetera. For the culinary, I have a culinary and it's just reading my culinary. And then they also take egg. Nine, nine years, so.
They'll take eggs first.
And then that's their initial maybe exposure to career tech ed and that they, once they're freshmen, will choose. Then it moves to. What percentage of our students take career tech ed courses, stage nine through 12? And what might be a barrier to our kids that don't?
Setting new credit opportunities.
We require our class in the dream of receiving, not really all of it. For our classes, we have that time for entrepreneurship and there's a 19 student set.
How much so far? Any other questions? All right, with that, so I'll pass off that agenda. And getting back to our agenda, we're at item two, Consent Agenda. Google of the Minutes, Review of Bills, and I added my handwriting and credit card charges. Well, I think I got it to retrieve. Oh, was there, I think you originally shared it with me and then you shared it with me and then. So there's one credit. And is that? And the other item is the communications, will acknowledge, thank you, square memorial.
Yeah, and I got another one, so I got, and I got a shout out too.
So why don't you share those in paper and we'll get that.
So we've got one, thank you from Krista Dobinson, her family for the books that were bought for her grandfather. Then the Good Samaritan Center, we sent some students there and it was a homeroom from one of the high school teachers. The residents of Good Samaritan, like, thank each and every for decorating the doors, was that Mrs. Wyer's home room?
We did that for Christmas and we did it for Valentine's Day, so I don't know which one it is.
Yeah, so it was a thank you from the Good Samaritan Center for decorating their doors, which I think the kids really enjoyed it, just for that's it. Then we got a thank you from, where Erica's from. Maplewood, thank you from Maplewood, they came and they visited our school, they are not PCBO yet, but since we are PCBO, we're opening up doors to schools across the state as part of the effort to expand those practices. And so then this is a thank you from Maplewood. Erica Lee, who's the teacher, and then she got married to me, so then they moved up to Maplewood and she teaches up there, yeah. And then we give you the shout outs, I thought I would read this. It's a shout out to Vicky Kelly, she is doing a genius research project with sixth graders. This is a very detailed product, the students are doing an excellent job and finding it very interesting. They are learning several skills and interesting facts about their topics. The other day, one of the girls I know was on a Zoom call with Kyle Shear, she's interested in investigation, kind of investigation. So she was on Zoom and so that's the kind of things that they're doing, like they're getting all of their interests that they want and they're getting to decide their path for how they want to go about it. So the kids are pretty tickled about doing it, but I know it's a predict, it's just kind of out of the ordnancy.
All right, so with that, you had in your package, the Minutes, the Review of Bills, and then one additional list of credit card charges that we. So those are the items under consideration for the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the items of the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Nagel moves the approval of the consent agenda, is there a second? Second, day seconds, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed say no. Motion passes. To move into the regular meeting items, first of all, we'll have reports, the superintendent's report was in our packet along with the accompanying administrator head, department heads' reports. And be sure, let's visit up with the staffing plan at the end of your report, why don't you get through any other items?
So the things that I maybe will just highlight, the things that included that document, so ICS is the company and I sent you information on that and on Ken Robert around the facilities committee and we have a meeting with them and they're gonna come down and they're gonna go walk through the school. That, I was introduced to this at, by Per Cam at the NDASA conference and they were kind of in a similar situation where at Park River, their building is aging, you know, and then these little things are coming along, they're causing them to have to expend money on them. So they, he had ICS come through, they did a walkthrough, they went with a plan, how to work on some of those deferred costs for the building. So it's free to start out with, you know, and I, we have a choice, once they come through and they offer the plan to us and their information that they want to share, then we can decide if we want to go further with it, there's no obligation whatsoever. So it's really kind of like a situation for us, we decide. So the facilities committee is gonna be there, Monica's on, but Robert will be there, Shannon, I suppose, will be there. So the facilities committee is going to be there. Monica's on, but Robert will be there. Shannon, I suppose, will go with them at that meeting and. If it gets more information, I hope this, because I really feel like I'm like facilities dumb and I'm learning things, but I really feel like I need this support and this help. And I, I think even if you talk to me, if you said any help you can get, any support, you know, the experts that, that's always helpful. So. Um, I included it, whether you guys want to use it or not. I, my evaluation is coming up. I did my goals and the things that we've been working on this year in the goal areas. I also took the superintendent job description and then I included this stuff, the NLP standards that I've been doing in my class, my seminar that I've been working on. Like I said, whether you want to use it or not, that's up to you. And I know it doesn't address everything on there, but I just thought just to give you some more information on those pieces. Um, the east entrance is up and running. Larry, make sure that that's up and. I think we get more kids in the east entrance than we do the central office. So the kids were excited because.
Don't the buses drop the high schools? It's up there too.
Not during, not during the school day, I'm using our side, but it starts with.
I, I don't blame the kids. If you want to park over there and have to walk all the way around again in the doors. So I think you're very appreciative. You know, we had to shut it down there for a little bit because we had some technical difficulties, but, um, what, what my mom said, superintendents, I'll give it and it's a great job and it's I'll take it away. So I wanted to make sure that we give it back. We promised them that's what we would do. So thank you to Mr. Engel, making sure that that happens. It's been kind of a long process. Um, I did give you an update on our, our lunch bills and our balances and kind of give you some information about the angel fund and the family. So trying really hard to, because that's kind of in the news right now, isn't it? With the legislative and the bills and just so, I, my blog today is about the school lunch program. Because there are, um, there's information out there, rumors or whatever, that it's schools and it, and some schools could work differently that kids that don't pay their bills, they're shamed. You know, they have to have a hand mark or whatever the things are that are out there. Yeah. But we don't do that. I mean, the kids eat. We, and nobody would know if a child with family was in arrears or not, because they, everybody just crunches in their number. And it, McKenzie doesn't say, oh, you owe money. There's never any conversation about that. So there is no shaming. The kids eat. It's just a matter of, I mean, our food program is paid for by the people paying their bills or for families that eat, you know, having to pay for that. So that's the hard part is that we still have to figure out a way to get that money because it's not like, it's just magically funded by somebody. So.
So we're trying to be respectful and responsible to our families and students while also being accountable to our taxpayers to do our best to collect what is owed. And we have options with free and reduced lunch applications and with charitable givers that are willing to step up and help with some.
That's a hard part to keep trying to get people to fill out free and reduced because of our families that are in arrears. I would say three, four, some of them have it filled out a free and reduced form, even though they, it's been sent to them. It's been given to them in person, you know, we, we try to reach out, help them out. And the phone calls made to them that if, but perhaps they wouldn't qualify, you know, and they just maybe realize that. I, I don't know what the barriers is to be, but we're trying to make sure from our side that we're constantly offering.
What is the difference in this amount this year than in previous years? I know a whole bit that it's taken great, but.
Geez, that's a really good question. I don't know. We could find that out, you know, we have to go back about three years. But I do know at times that we have families that have thousands of dollars that are arrears to us. So that's why we're trying to stay on top of it. Because when you think about it, even if we send that away to collections, it's still, you're writing off that debt. Cause you don't know if you're going to get that payment or not, or if you do, you might only get half of it or 60% of it because of just the way that that system works. But that's our best way to get that money. So we're trying not to have families get that large, that big of a, and we offer plans like come and talk to us. We'll have payments. We have people that make payments for it. So we're, we're just trying to be as, like you said, as fair as possible and make sure, but still yet be responsible. Because somebody has to pay for the lunches and somebody needs to, you know, keep that piece of our budget afloat. Um, let's see, other than that, I don't, I, Jessica Wyers is working on her driver's ed classes and I have somebody else that's interested in it also. So we're going to pay for Jess's, to get her driver's ed class for us. But maybe later on, we might want to look at our policy for advanced, advancement degrees and paying for degrees. That might be something we'll look at in the future, but I feel like we started this process now. We have to have a driver's education teacher because Mrs. Kelly has told me she's not going to be here forever. And I need to start planning and Mr. Warren is our other drivers and teachers. So. Yeah, he might, please come back and help us on. I was thinking about that yesterday with driving bus. I'm like, I think it's everything for us, right? Very thankful for having, other than that. Do you have any questions on anything for any of the principals or Larry?
I have noted a question for Mr. Dobson included in his report, the student engagement surveys. And I, I probably ask this every time. You noted that there is, we use the Wellington engagement index as well as the state engagement survey. And can you elaborate and maybe if I want to come over, I don't know if the people on Zoom can hear, but, um, the, the amount of time that it takes for each of those two surveys and the value that you see in the results of those engagement surveys.
Well, Mr. Beta can help me with that a little bit. I just did the student engagement index, which is the state survey that they want us to do, or they require us to do with the third graders yesterday. It took about 15 to 20 minutes. There's like 25 or 26 questions. And we went through it together. Like I read it to them, made sure they understood what was going on because they're third graders, first time they ever did it. So, and I think I'll do that with the fourth, fifth and sixth graders too, just to make sure. I don't think Mr. Beta is going to be reading every single question to his older kids. But, um, so that's the state and then that's the information that goes out on any insights. I don't know how quickly that those results come back. I don't know that, well, I, I do know, we don't necessarily put any stock into that. The questions aren't the best. I, I don't know if any information garnered from that is really applicable to our teachers to make them better instructors. The Wellington, which we administer six times through the school year is a very simple, very quick thing. I've talked to you guys about it in the past, but it's, it's, they, they put a dot for their class on an axis of love it, hate it versus challenged, unchallenged. And then our teachers do look at that data. We study that data. We compare it to the school average. You know, that, that's something that does inform our instructional practices.
And we pay for the Wellington index, but we don't pay anything for the U S of the state survey.
I don't know.
You said that charge up.
Yeah.
You pay for it differently. Yeah, the, the Wellington is, is relatively cheap. I don't remember the total cost, but it's, it's like $600.
I think the information that we garner from it, it's very well worth it. I think the only deficit we have is those ladies sitting over there know this too. We don't have the Wellington for K1, 2. They were talking, some of the teachers were talking about needing something similar to it, you know, with an access and working the kids through it on how to do it. Cause they felt that they, you know, possibly, you know, it would guidance be able to do that, but, um, that's, that's the only deficit that we would have was so then they just have to rely on their classroom expertise, you know, to gather that information.
Good info. Thank you. Any other questions for any of the principals? And before I have Mrs. Sel go on, I just wanted to, when I reviewed this yesterday, and, and seeing Mrs. Sel's staffing plan, I just wanted to remind everyone that, you know, this is Mrs. Sel's staffing plan. This is not the board staffing plan because we don't, we don't hire the people on this plan. We only hired these two people, Mrs. Sel and, and Miss Jepson, our business manager. And so when I, um, when I visited with Mrs. Sel about, well, you know, Mr. Dobson is interested in continuing as principal. I said, well, that, that's your call. That's up to you. And I wanted to make it clear that the board doesn't weigh in on that. But again, you know, because Mrs. Sel was hired under unusual circumstances and initially was kind of an interim superintendent. We visited about it at our December board meeting and nobody had any appetite to start looking for a new superintendent at that time. And we, we will do the formal review for Mrs. Sel for spring one at our next board meeting. But again, I want you to revisit and say, does, if anyone wants to start looking for a new superintendent, it's probably, we're, we're probably too late. But we should start right now before next month's review. I have had, I have no desire to do that. I've had no board members bring that to my attention. And I just wanted to give everyone the opportunity to step up and say, at, at least that we, we don't want to start looking for a new superintendent.
I think we've got a good fit for what she's doing right now on the team reason.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Then so with that, again, understanding that the staffing plan is what she proposes. She is our superintendent now and we expect her to be in the future. So this is what her recommendation is to us. That she would intend to try to put in place for the next school year. So with that, I'll let you touch on what you, what you put in our packet.
Okay. So I tried to lay them out elementary, junior high and then share. I am an air, the shared, I added myself underneath and I did put that down as an MTG. Oh, I'm sorry, TJG. So currently we have our foreign language open and what I'm going to propose is that we, we're trying to hire foreign language. I don't know how successful we're going to be. I'm keeping my fingers crossed. I can use home house universities. It's not looking real promising that we're going to get somebody because they're just not graduates. People are not just not doing that. So, um, but I'm, I've, I've got some plans. In fact, I thought of something on the drive in that I'm going to talk to principals about. And pairing that hopefully with an ELL. Now, Robert had a really good question the other day. Does that ELL person have to be able to speak Spanish or a foreign language? No, but they have to have certification. They have, it's through the state. It's, it's pretty rigorous. Leslie took a test. She took the praxis. So we do have that option and Leslie has generously offered her help, you know, and so has Lee Delway. They've been our past ELL, ELL people to help us with this hiring. Where we can't find somebody to make sure that we're meeting all the requirements of it. But my proposal or what I'm planning on doing is foreign language and ELL, kind of trying to look for that as a partnership there to see if I can do that. And then Greg, I, I found out that Greg does not need to resign from this position because we're not cutting that position. So Mr. Dobson will stay as the elementary principal next year, but we will hire an instructional coach. And then Leslie's leaving, Leslie's leaving, we'll leave open our technology integrationist that has become a big part of the day that has allowed Larry to do some different things that he hasn't made. Well, he's got kind of handled it in the hardware side. You and I talked and Leslie does like the software side. And she's that middle person between Larry and our staff. So giving those helpers to the staff as far as technology. So I'd like to partner those two. I think those go together well because that person is in those classrooms, knows what the teachers want, knows what the teachers need. And then they can go out and they can, you know, pursue and help out in that area, coach in that area. So that this is what I would like to hire. We're still looking to hire a pair in the high school. Mr. Beta has some different ideas of, you know, as we have more kids taking dual credit classes now because they were awarded the grant from the states. We've got how many kids can learn. And to try to handle some of those pieces of distance learning, it's just getting to be such a big piece that we would like to offer more. It's just a matter of we need to have that person. So Mr. Beta has some ideas about this just not being in, in class here, but having some other roles help out.
Also, one thing Mrs. Sel and I have visited about is kind of tied to that technology piece is there is an effort in the state.
Hello.
To a bill that's in the, into this session to.
Oh, I just wanted makeup remover. Avon doesn't make it anymore and.
Tell her to stop talking during class. Anyway, there is an effort or possibility that the state will require us to have a digital literacy coach or teacher on staff. That it doesn't have to be a technology teacher. It could be an English teacher. It could be a music teacher. It could be a science teacher. I think any teacher could build a role or any, I don't even know that it would have to be a teacher, but to require integration of digital literacy within the entire curriculum from K through 12. And that would be a really natural role for that instructional coach and technology assistance position. So it's, it's not required at this time. It's possible that it will be even for the next school year. And even if it's not required by the state, it may be that it's the right thing for us to do for our students to, to help them become more digitally literate. So.
Well, I know we kept yesterday too about cybersecurity pieces just becoming so large, but Mr. Engel.
Yeah, you know, we used to use, I said, it was kind of a grant that they lost in light. We had quite a lot. So we, we were able to reach a speaker from Edgut and we see, uh, we'll get this after. And then I've started with fourth, fifth and sixth now. And I got about halfway through like Greg and I wanted to talk about it when it's October. So I'll be going back again next month. For getting into the good cybersecurity.
So would you say that a simple example of that, that we can all relate to would be that it teaches kids not to just use the same password for every single website? Because how many of us do that?
Is it just password? Password.
What did we talk about with the other kids? Was to find balance between being online and your home.
Another piece is the coding piece. We have teachers that are sort of vibrating each coding, but I mean, that's just becoming so much more part of their lives. Like their digital natives, they've been doing this their whole lives. Um, and it's just, it's here and it's not going.
And what you said about finding balance, I think would be an important component to the mental health wellness of the kids and all of us as well.
For that quality, we have a seventh grader who wrote a program for a timer and they actually use that timer on the ITAS in K1, 2.
Okay. So what are you looking, this is just part of your report to us.
Yes.
Are there any questions on, on this proposed staffing report or any other comments?
My comment and I talked to Mrs. Sel is just to, now would be a good time to evaluate if we still want to have the instructional coach on staff with our grant. Funding side of it.
Is there any possibility that some grant funding could be available for that?
Well, actually Shannon and I have been, we, when we wrote our RE, our, our small school grant, we actually wrote it for partial funding for the instructional technology coach. Because, you know, addressing the point that we know that cybersecurity is coming up and there's things we're trying to be proactive, but also that instructional coach piece. I guess Greg and I were visiting yesterday because he knows his job the best of anybody, but Mike Woodnap from rugby said it the best. It's really hard to measure what those instructional coaches do, right? But we're in an era right now of finding teachers and it's very, very hard to recruit and retain. And without support and help, that's mostly, it isn't money. I think you can ask the teachers, it's not money. Our teachers don't do that. But it's the fact that there's so many other things going on in our schools and not having that support, especially in the instructional area. Cause a lot of Greg and Brandon's days are taken up with those operations things that even though that's not their love, those are those things, the discipline, you know, um, meeting, meeting deadlines, you know, those pieces. But they would like to do more instruction. They would like to do more observations and, but it's just not possible during the day. Because what happens right now, you have to take care of. So then something gets slided and unfortunately it's probably instruction and observation is what I, I would, I would think that that's what they would say when I was the principal of us. And that's the piece that that instructional coach offices. I went around other schools of our size. Rugby has two instructional coaches. They actually have reading and they have math. This is just an instructional coach for K12. So I think it's just a really small piece and then adding the technology on there. But at least it's something for support because our new teachers that are coming in and our teachers, I mean, even our, even our teachers that are veterans, that support that Greg gives them is super important. And this year Greg and I are trying to do three jobs with two people and it's, it's a lot because he's just not getting to do the instructional coach piece, piece as much as he would like to do. And it's it's a lot because he's just not getting to do the instructional coach piece as much as he would like to do. So your question, I think it's really important that we have this instructional coach. And I think the teachers and the staff would all agree on that.
I would echo that. I mean, obviously, I see, I was instructional coach. And then now on the principal side of it, Anna is right, the day to day operations of being a principal and running a K six school and then seeing Brandon do his job from the side of of an administrator, like, I wish I could be in classrooms more and more. And it's just, it's not always possible. And we are the instructional leaders of our schools because we're the principals. But in a school our size, we don't have the capacity to always do that. And on the flip side of that, when I was an instructional coach, that was the only thing I was in. That's all I took care of. That's all I did is help our teachers become better instructors. So we're missing that this year. Honestly, we have two first year teachers and Brandon and myself, I think we will say, where do we need the most help in our instruction? It's with those two first year teachers. And it's not because they don't know the content or they don't know this, that, or the other. It's because they're first year teachers and they just need support. And and as a, as an administrator, you know, finding the time to to offer that support to a first year teacher, let alone, you know, teachers that have been here forever. It's because things change in education so quickly, you know, it's, we need it. We do. It's worth the money.
Would you echo that?
I would. For me, I'm thinking like PCBL journey. You know, we've been going PCBL. And we want to keep going with that. We want to take it to the next step. But like Becca and I, we are, we're kind of at, we're just spinning our wheels. We're not sure. We need help with that. I go into Northern Castas, it's kind of the same things. But it's like, okay, we want to take it to the next step. But and Greg does come in our room all the time. But as a principal, you know, he's really focused on the kids and, you know, assisting me with that and maybe behaviors get thrown in there. And I feel like things have kind of been halted this year because we were on a continuum and now it kind of stopped. So and I know some of us are further ahead in our PCBL journey than others. And in order for us all to move forward as one, we need, we need a coach to help us.
So Mrs. Sell, as we, you know, in the past several years, as you've been a principal and now superintendent, and we have hired new staff. My experience is that nearly all of our new staff are, almost all of our new staff are first year teachers. Not all. I can see one on here. Mrs. Man first in the category a couple of years ago, experience before she came to us, but I don't recall even having many opportunities to interview teachers who were anything other than brand new graduates. And so there are two in the elementary this year. There are, well, two of you, you've helped our Filipino teacher in high school that are brand new to teaching in the States. And as we move forward and teachers retire or leave, I can only anticipate that almost all of our new teachers are totally brand new teachers. And if not new, it's new to our district and new to our teaching style.
I think, so what I'd like to do is I'm going to open this internally for this instructional and see if we can get anybody. And then then we would have to hire, we might have some shuffling going on. But I think we're at a point too where we can expand our ability to do this job well because Greg is still here. So Greg can still mentor the instructional coach, right? So that instructional coach isn't going to be coming in cold. There's still support from Greg, both from Brandon and myself too, but kind of creates that perfect ability to grow somebody, right? Because we want to grow people from within. Robert had a really good point though about pulling a teacher from a classroom. Yeah, I get that. But I think that that teacher would have so much more impact. I look at Greg, Paul and Greg was painful out of the classroom because of the impact that had. But yet he's been able to impact all of our teachers, you know, to teach up to that level and be that kind of a teacher.
I think we, you guys as a board have supported that by allowing us to do the Teacher Leadership Academy twice. That that was made to grow teacher leaders. We've grown a ton of teacher leaders. This is a teacher leadership position. It's not an administrator position. But it's, it's, it's a person that that can lead other teachers. And that's exactly what you guys have allowed us to do is grow teacher leaders. So we have them, I think, in the building. And then we need to, you know, allow them to do that.
Any other questions or comments? Any other follow up on the other administrative reports that were in your packets? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to accept the superintendent's report.
Make a motion.
I'm but moves to accept the superintendent's report. Is there a second?
Second.
Nagel seconds. Any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Next, welcome item two, the business manager report, which is on page forty two of your packet. Any highlights?
Yeah, the audit, we were, I had talked with Daniel Jolson and he originally thought that he would be here today to go through the the audit. But one of his last tests was to check the year twenty, he checked the year twenty twenty to twenty twenty one. And he had, we were granted and awarded and spent over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in one single year, which then qualifies us for a single year audit. So while he was doing that, he quick checked twenty one, twenty two, and of course, we hit that again. He said, most schools and so a lot of the smaller schools are hitting that because of the S R funds that came in. He said, he had heard that there was rumors that they were going to try and push that seven hundred fifty thousand dollars up so that a lot of schools didn't have to go through a single year audit again, but that hasn't happened yet. So he, he figures he should be here for the March meeting to go through with a two year audit of nineteen twenty and twenty twenty one. And then he said, as soon as tax season is over, he will hurry up and start the twenty one, twenty two single year audit. He also, that exact same day that he was visiting with me about that, I got this email forwarded from Tom Van Oring. And it was from the from the DPI and they had, of course, they know our numbers. Most of the time, if it's federal money, it comes through web grants. So they were pretty much aware that we had over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. But they wanted to know when we were going to have that audit done because apparently it's supposed to be due the ninth day after close of your fiscal year, which would be March fifteenth. So we will not make that. So I wrote the letter or I filled out the form and sent it back and they said, that's fine. Daniel Jolson said he figured he should be able to do that by June thirty of next year for that single year audit, so.
And you feel like you're getting caught up, you're starting to master or at least be able to function with some of the?
Every time I, I think I might have mastered something and then, then, you know, something comes up like negotiations meetings we went to. It's like, oh, there's a whole other part of the job that I don't know. But yeah, well, and I was able to get the January books done in three days. So I wanted to get them to you guys earlier, but it just didn't happen. But you got it yesterday. So I figured four days or three and a half days was good. Um, yeah, there's just, there's just, I think the bookkeeping or the accounting aspect of it is coming easier. It's just all the the extra, you know, the negotiations, the budget, the elections, things that you grants, and they're even coming easier, you know. Anna's real good about finding grants and applying for them. And then it's just a matter, I kind of have my little system now of how I'm keeping track of the grants and how. So I think it's way much easier.
Is there a motion to accept the business manager report? Day moves to accept the business manager report. Is there a second?
No, second.
Or second. Is there any discussion? Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Okay, so the December and January financial reports, December is within our packets, starting on page forty three. And then January came to us yesterday. We should have had an opportunity. Let's see, I do. Oh, a question that came up, which I'll maybe can hold off, but so I don't forget it. My question, when I came across in the budget, SRCTC building repairs that we had spent sixteen thousand or eighteen thousand seven fifty. And my question is going to be, what, what are we doing with that one this year at the Career Tech Center? So. Any other questions or comments on the decent jam financial reports? Like I saw one other, oh, and I think that was also Career Tech Center. It was to do with the summer ad teacher budget, which looked like a really big number, but I don't know if it's bigger than before. We'll get to that. Any other questions or is there a motion to approve the December and January financial reports? I'm but moves to approve December and January financial reports. Is there a second?
A second.
Nagel seconds. Any discussion? Questions? Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Moving on to school policy. We have a second reading of policy G A A E. That's a minute. It's on page sixty.
Okay, this is the policy is required in not specifically race theory, it's really more just of how we'll handle if people, you know, whatever they do. So it's required. Everything has to be exactly. So I put in the wording that was approved on the first reading. So we just need a second reading.
Were there any comments received by staff or public related to this policy since our last meeting?
I think I did have somebody that asked about the critical race theory, just like wondering what it was, you know, and I gave them, it's really too much about. Yeah, this was, I think what happened was if I handed off to this superintendent of public instruction, they had to come up with, you know, the rules and what we're going to do with that.
Okay, is there a motion to, and the motion, the court took the motion for Mrs. Sell's communication with us on her detailed agenda. But the motion that I'm seeking is I move to adopt policy G A A E as presented on second reading and that it become the official policy of the district. Nagel makes that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm but second. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Let's call for discussion on G A A E. Hearing none, let's have a little couple, please. Dave, yes. I'm but, yes, Nagel, yes, Thor?
Yes.
Neil, yes, motion five to zero and G A A E as presented has, will be the official policy of our district. Moving on, then these, the next two are just some policy and process items that Mrs. Sell wanted to bring to our attention for possible consideration for future change or application.
So they, emergency closing is a recommended one. The supplementary one, stormy reason that natural disasters are, it's specific to, so. We do pay our twelve market employees when we have storm days, but if I, if I say, hey, you need to come to work and clear the snow or you need to come here. They do, but and they still, but they still get paid for it even if they can't get it. So I think it's more out of a a respect for our employees that if it's bad weather, you can't get it to town, you know. It's a, it's a good policy to have. I just wanted you guys to be aware of it because I did make questions on like why, why do people get paid for not coming to work, you know, so. We had a lot with those force warnings, there was.
So you were, you shared with me that you had visited with a neighbor and superintendent who has a different policy. If you don't come to work, benefits, serious weather, then you don't get paid. And so I think we should be aware that that's not a universal policy and we'll be looking to our superintendent for that. Is this, we want to handle this or, or again, do we if, do we need to be responsible to our taxpayers and say, well, they need to make it up on another day if possible. They need to work from home if possible. We may be seeing some other recommendations or not. They think this is what we want. Think that if changes are made, they will take it back to the next school year.
I just wanted you to put your eyes on him. I don't know if you want me to give my thoughts now or later after you see it, but. I, I think it's goodwill towards our people that work in our district. And like I said, it's a respect or kindness that, you know, I get that neighborhood lives out of town and you snowed in for four days. I, I felt the pain, right? We were snowed in if you lived out in the country. But if they lived in town, you know, the fact that they can still come to work and they would get paid for those days, which I think. And then I also, through this policy, I could say, you know what? If the weather's not that bad, you need to get into work. If I can get into work, you can come in and work your hours. So I think that it allows us both sides of it and then, you know, where we live and I think, but I, but I also could decide where the, you know, the taxpayer is saying, if you're not working, why are you getting paid? So, but my recommendation is to keep it just because I think that it's just out of kindness or, but it also gives me the power to say you need to come to work.
If you have thoughts about those policies, feel free to share them with Mrs. Sell in the next and if we want, we can revisit and make changes if we want. Any questions or comments? If not, we'll move to old business, which is very short because there's nothing underneath it. New business, great, S I C T C presentation, Mr. Stollerberg and Mr. Rothman.
I just want to say good morning, hopes, school board and staff. We like this opportunity to come around and give you guys the chance to ask questions and really bend our ear if there's things that you would like to see changed or done differently within our center. So a couple of questions you may have had about finances this year. The sixty thousand was a painted, it was made towards the window upgrade project that went on last year. And so those are done. And so we should not have that. We have been trying to update some of the entrances. I think we've got most, most of those done. So.
So for the benefit of the rest of the board and the public that may be listening and watching later, ever since I've been on the board, which is in my eleventh year now, but some people may not know that the Old School District owns this building and this property. And we rent it to the Southeast Region Career Technical Center. And as part of our either agreement or tradition, we allocate a minimum of twenty five thousand dollars per year towards maintenance of this building. Once or twice or three times in my time on the board, the center has come to us and said, yeah, we really need to upgrade this as well. And we have contributed more than that. But it is our will and we want to keep it.
Yeah, you're right. But I know one of the major improvements was the problem, I think it is the same time, the elementary was being done. The window project was another one. the window project was another one.
And, and so we want to keep this building in good condition. It's a thirteen year old building now, on the story side?
Yeah, it's seventy-four, six, seven.
So, um, we want to keep it good and functional, and, and yet, the, the, the Career Tech Center itself also, maybe doesn't do major repairs, but, but maybe the smaller maintenance items that, that they do take care of.
So, yes, thank you for clarifying, uh, and the other question that you have brought up about summer S and E, uh, that's really a pass through, uh, for, um, for DPI, uh, as a center, we can apply for those funds, our teachers are teaching it, and so what it, what is happening, um, it's literally, uh, coming through Olds Public School, uh, less than five percent. For doing the, the paperwork on that side, and so, uh, takes care of our summer S and E contracts as well as, um, missing these, um, expenses in that program.
So if the number I saw, I don't remember where I saw it, you know, was a hundred and eleven thousand, or something like that. So, uh, that, that's funny, that we have applied for through the Department of Public Construction, they'll pay it to us, we'll keep five percent of your scholarship dollars, and they'll pass the rest on to you, so that your staff can go out in the summer and teach or supervise our students' summer at class, as well as, oh, but, for Ellen Dell and Sergeant Central, they're also.
So, any other questions or clarifications standing on that, so, very good. Well, uh, again, we'll give you guys the opportunity to ask any additional questions you may have, the first two, first two that I had heard during the meeting, so, our one major that kind of gives highlights of our staff, who we have, uh, several of the staff were, uh, here today, Mr. Anderson came in, uh, looks like he's got some science school, presenters here today, so he's taking care of them, uh, and, you know, in his auto class, and, uh, but overall, um, fully staff, which is, which is great, uh, we are looking for a few different positions. We have a teacher at Dickinson and a counselor for, for serving, and so we still got a few staff positions that we are looking for, uh, as the center as a whole. Over nineteen hundred students are enrolled in our center program, over fourteen schools we have as members, and so, uh, we try to offer a pretty diverse offerings for CTE, and, uh, Ms. Johnson was actually just helping Bismar highlighting, uh, CTE for CTE in the Great Hall, and so, it is CTE month, like I said, and, and we're trying to showcase some of those great things that we're doing, and so, um, man, this is worth, sorry, yes, so, and we also have a staff manager, so, uh, I like to pull this, uh, overview for Olds High School, and it gives you an idea of concentrators and completers. And, uh, if you see, on the second page of that, we're classing all the different programs, uh, if there's zeros in categories, just simply means that the, the number is less than ten, ideally is a concentrator to protect the, the school and students' identities, really, so, uh, you do have students enrolled in those types of programs and those offerings, and so, kind of gives you guys an idea of what we are offering for CTE opportunities, um, through here. I wanna always bring your guys' attention to the choice-ready matrix, we do our best as a center to help you guys check a lot of those boxes. Just remember, just working with, um, Mr. Beta, and, uh, making sure that we can help check these boxes for the students, so they do qualify, uh, to be choice-ready, and so, um, I know this has kind of been a moving target lately, they've kind of added some things to this, um, they added, uh, foreign language, uh, as an option to qualify, as well as, uh, I believe, one of the house bills currently is to, um, look at changing the ASBAP score from an eighty-five, I believe, down to a fifty, uh, which would allow, I'll say, among different capital planning, uh, for the scholarships to qualify, it's just that eighty-five or so few kids hit that mark on that ASBAP that, was really high, so we, we sent a ton of data to them, would have, would have, um, to make sure that they have a good standing point, as well as, I think, uh, I think, uh, thirty-one on the ASBAP and attended, based on trading. Also allowing you to qualify, so.
So when you're talking about the eighty-five score right now, that's to qualify for the CTE, or for the scholarship?
That's to qualify, that's what they have in place to qualify for the North Dakota scholarships.
Because here on the choice ready, it does say thirty-one or thirty-two, but that's to be, that's to qualify for choice that.
Yep.
That seems like a really decent.
And, and so that's why we've really advocated, uh, and I believe, like I said, the house bill is, um, looking at fifty, I'll put that as, so, that is, I'll say, good news. Another good news is, there's another house bill currently out there that, um, they're also, they're arm wrestling right now, but, uh, that's what they're doing on Bismar, and, uh, that six thousand dollar scholarship that it's been applied for, uh, they looked at taking that to ten times, okay, and it has passed out with the house at seven thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars. That's an odd number, I don't know why, but I think, like I said, they're in their arm wrestling, I think it'll end up at about eight thousand, so, um, that's what I'm projecting, and so, that's great news for our kids, our students. They'll be eligible for that if they, they hit that north limit. And as CTE instructors out here, I think we help you guys check a lot of those boxes, providing work-based learning experiences, kind of shadowing, um, you name it, lots of, lots of different aspects of completing, uh, all of our students get the, the choice ready, uh, we're working with them, and so that's a, an easy one that we can, uh, and, and that's really life skills. And so soft skills, and it's using the same matrix scale that, uh, the practice-based learning, one through four. I like to have, I always did it with the students, and I always had a selfie, well, it was impressive, where kids were like, Speller, I'm pretty sure I'm a three or four on that, and like, I don't know, I'm really a three or four on that. And so, it was, and it was good, good conversation pieces, and, and those are the, those are the reports that the parents got back, and they said, that's probably one of the most valuable, reports I got as a parent, uh, to really see what my child was at, um, understanding from another perspective. Registration guide, I'm not gonna go through this with you, but this is really just, uh, our teachers kind of highlighted the courses that they have, their presentations that they did, so, if you have questions about any courses, ask Mr. Rockman, if you'd like to see additional courses or something different. Again, check with Mr. Rockman myself, uh, we're always looking to see what is best for our kids, what's best for our school. We'll get the need, if we need to, uh, ITV options that we do have. I, I know this is something that, you know, we've offered ITV, uh, foreign language from here, so now we may use that as a, as an option, like we did. So, if we aren't able to, schools, they will fill, and so, possibly looking for ideas or options for you guys. Help fill the needs of our students. Dual credit, uh, we do have a few dual credit options, um, we have more over the office, which, we're a little closer to science school, and kids on campus, and so we're, we're key, get more dual credit opportunities for our students here, um, especially in auto move. But, uh, dual credit is something that we are looking at. Health careers, uh, I know this is, Mrs. Words is really working with, um, this state college above, um, really getting a certified CNA degree, um, once they're done with. I am gonna get to work-based learning. It is a big course right now, it's a buzzword, in CTE role, uh, we've been doing it forever. We used to call it cooperative, work experience, summer S and E, uh, but it's really students going out on the job, working, and, uh, finding their passion, learning by doing, uh, and so, work-based learning is something that, I'll say, it's just a new, um, name for something that we've always been, we, talks with all of our different CTSOs or youth groups, possible there, and then we get down to the nitty-gritty of, um, the cost. So, I always bring this page to everybody, I don't try to hide anything, as transparent as we can, um, what this number is drafted off of, folks, I just wanna, hope you guys understand this. It takes basically your nine through twelve, uh, enrollment from the previous year. Okay, and so if you're going up in enrollment or down in enrollment, you know, you might see an up or a down if you have a big, uh, upswing in students, and so, uh, as well as the additional offerings that you guys have, um, from, from our staff, and so, uh, some schools have a full-time counselor on staff, uh, sometimes, some, some schools have a full-time ed teacher on staff. You guys have several different options, like here that you're really paying for as a part of the package, and so, um, it's, it's a bundle package that you guys get, and that's, that's based off, like I said, your nine through twelve.
So I have a question.
Yes.
So our, our assessment, our tuition assessment toward this school year is two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and one dollars. So, from what I'm remembering from the past, I thought that, and maybe, maybe it's changed, or maybe I misunderstood what you just said. So what I remember from the past is that the hours that the center teachers teach our seventh and eighth period, which is all the way to the end, then we would pay for those, if those folks pay additional for those hours?
That's included in your assessments, yeah, so there's, there's a base assessment, and base assessment's around for every school that we've worked with, basically includes two days of panel sleep, and so many conferences, okay, so that's kind of a base package for us, then, um, let's say, okay, Mr. Anderson's teaching, um, two additional periods of auto. You don't need to assess those periods of auto, it's included in this number, it's, good question. So, that's all the additional periods, um, that are being offered currently, um, if we take something back, we'll obviously, we'll look at it, but at this point, uh, we're gonna continue to try, try to provide the same offerings.
Question.
Yes.
So if we look from the seventeen, eighteen to the eighteen, nineteen school year, is that, would that have been the year then that our Olds Public School counselor moved over here to the Career Tech Center? And the reason that we did that was because, then, when we, we were, the district was paying the counselor, we have little or nothing in the first, but as a career tech center, we can get forty percent?
Uh, up to forty-five, yes, forty.
Forty percent of that, and we still have, well, except for, I don't know, higher, but we still have forty percent.
Go to that, that's why I say fifty dollars instead of a hundred thousand, because you hire somebody, you pay all the benefits, the retirement, everything, you're to hire a hundred dollars. Any other questions on the numbers? The next page is the scholarship data. This whole school had twelve students get scholarships, nine in the CTE area, three academic, um, and for a total of forty, forty-three percent of your students, the state average, uh, is twenty-two percent, so, state, so, uh, good for your kids, good for your students, that's six thousand dollars.
And that was for the North Dakota?
That was for, well, basically, last year's, last couple of years, juniors and seniors had the option to either qualify in the CTE category or an academic, they're moving, I think we have basically one more, is it one more, Mr. Beta, or two more years of that, and so that's, okay, we might be in our last year here, that qualification, then it will just be a more good scholarship, which kind of combines both of those.
But I guess my question is, if a student isn't pursuing higher education in North Dakota, they're not gonna be in this data set?
No, they'll still, they would still, they would still qualify, they still have that ability to, to take that scholarship if they want.
Okay, so you don't have to separately apply, it's just if you met these criteria?
If you met the criteria mark and benchmark, um, you basically can, and let's say you decide, you know, maybe I'm gonna go down to, um, you know, Lake Erie Tech or wherever it is, or Dakota, but, okay, finish that two year, now I'm gonna come back, and you can still access that, have access to that, those funds purposes.
But, and only in the North Dakota college?
Only at North Dakota.
In, in your example, if you wouldn't qualify for those years you spent at Lake Erie Tech, but then if you decide, I'm gonna go to Valdez State.
They could come back and then access.
I think they have to formally accept the scholarship within a month after their graduation or something, and then it's on record, and it's theirs, and, and they have six years to use. Or even if, for example, if they went to an out-of-state college for four years and then came back, and for a graduate.
But you have to accept.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we encourage everybody that qualifies to accept it, whether it's a, I'm not going to North Dakota college.
Or I'm not going to colleges.
Obviously, yeah, we still, we still really push them to accept it, because you don't know what you're gonna be doing, you know, six years, five years, so, just, so, change your mind, right? So, it's, yeah.
And, and you still, it's, it's amazing, you still have kids that say, no, I'm not gonna do it.
I, I've got counselors that come to me and say, it's true, we've tried to get students on board and the parents on board, and they're just like, no, they don't want it, and I'm like, parents don't want this, and the students don't want, and I'm just baffled, so.
It's just a matter of signing.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not that difficult. So. Once you fall back. And I'm sure, yeah. So, and like I said, that's six thousand, so potentially we eight thousand next year, so.
So those that you listed on the sheet are qualified, and some of them did not choose to accept.
They might have.
And do you even know?
We don't. Don't know that, you just know what has been, what, what benchmarks have, they've met the criteria, and they fall, so, the data we're getting is very.
I'd be interested in seeing this data for Olds, uh, historically, something that, I, I've probably seen it, but.
Um, then Mr. Rock is gonna tell you a little bit about our, our tech.
Yeah, there, there's a list of all of the high tech units that we have, um, the majority of this stuff that you've known here, we've got a couple of teams, a high school, and some things, um, because it had a changeover with your science department, and in the past, we've had the science increase in more of the units, but, um, hopefully we can get the new science features involved and get some of the equipment as well, so. We did order, um, a larger vinyl cutter printer that's capable of doing some banners and those type of things, and we have Larry here, um, of high school that has that equipment, but, we have a number of our schools that have requested it, so we're gonna rotate that around with our high-tech equipment, so. So we'll have that out here coming up, we should get it at, we just ordered it. Another thing, we're going to update our embroidery units, they, they should also be here in about a month. And then we are adding another laser engraver to our, to do style. And the new laser engravers, the old ones, you had to have a, some kind of a suction system vacuum to get rid of the, the smoke and everything that's in there. And get it out of the building. And the new units are all self-contained, it's got a real, really good filtration system. We could actually take it into your library, it makes a little noise, but you could take it anywhere in the school and use it, so. Very nice units that way.
You got your STEM, you want some stuff to put in your STEM lab or your STEM classes, it doesn't matter. Teacher. Yeah, all of the teachers have access. So. Yep, sure.
Are there materials? You put in your that suitable for.
Upper, yeah, probably, you know, six, I would say probably nothing really to all, maybe fifth, that sixth grade probably where you could search.
We'd like to see if you give you some million dollars worth of rate of. For free printers to. And the dovships to David, this nice stuff.
And all of this information, there, there's a more longer description of everything on our website. So if you guys went into our website and then went to our high tech. You can get a lot more information on that. We did just have a mishap with our, or not a mishap, but we had a motherboard go out on our NADAMOCH table. And the, to replace the old. Computer system underneath there was seventy-five hundred dollars. And I got it all to Seth and I said, can you get a motherboard that would match this? He didn't.
Yeah, he said.
Yeah, it's always, it's big savings relying on our local people that are very knowledgeable, so, yeah. Well, it was not under warranty anymore, they didn't buy the extended warranty, the extended warranty was like ten thousand dollars, so. Yeah, it's, yeah. So, so no, it was not under warranty, but I feel pretty good. It's, it's kind of amazing, he gets somebody he's never seen in an NADAMOCH table before, but he has that computer knowledge and he came in and just, he could manipulate everything right away. It was like, he's never seen this before, but yet, you know, just with all of his knowledge, he was able to. Work it.
Does the board have any other questions for us at the center? We appreciate your base partnership. We are pretty excited about. First bill that actually got passed by the governor was eleven ninety-nine, House Bill eleven ninety-nine. And it was more grand, we applied for last year. And clearly these federal funds of it, they kind of had this carrot hanging out there, there you go, this is sixty-eight billion, we applied for. And we're awarded just under three billion and some of that is to add some different rotational units. And so we will have a precision ag unit that will bring here, we'll unload and they will have all kinds of precision ag stuff from the ag program. We'll also have an advanced manufacturing unit that we create and we'll also be not a careers trainer, add some additional things for. So those are going to be some. Opportunities.
You, you did ask the question, are there bugs or hurdles or blocks that gets taken class about here? I think since, but back to the traditional schedule, that a lot of those have been. I would say the only hurdles are, you know, they need four math, three science, or, or three math, or three science, you know. All of the required classes would keep them from being able to take more CTE, but. Yeah, I don't, there's really no hurdles for anybody.
There's space, sometimes there's.
Yeah, sometimes, sometimes, yeah, yeah, classes, if they were already at capacity, we really can't take. Other than that, there really aren't anymore.
So through my work on the state board, I'm aware that there is a learning continuum that would allow us to, as a district, adopt. An alternative pathway to graduation where instead of having to take four math, whatever the number of math is. That those students, some students could choose to follow a different pathway and they would learn some of those math standards. That are required in CTE courses.
Yeah.
And it, it, it would take effort, but.
There, there are some schools utilizing that and they actually just brought a bill, it was a CTE pathway bill. As directors, we collectively said, this is something we can already do with the continuum pathway. So we opted to go in opposition of it. It also does another, I'd say, things that weren't a hundred percent up there, so it did fail. So. So. It can already be gotten, and so if the board wants to look at an alternative CTE type of pathway for students, it's something that this board here will. Decide if that's something.
One more question, and this I'm going to tie in with your efforts to bring in ICS, because this building belongs to the district. I would like them to come here as well, but from your standpoint and from a budgetary standpoint for us to keep this building in good operating condition to continue to compete. What are our next big maintenance items that may be?
This room right here is one I would like to give updates to. Our restrooms. We, we just had our five-year visitation last fall and to meet some of our handicap. Means that we would need to do some remodeling in our restrooms. So that's on the radar. I mean, there's always something to do, always, but I would say those are private restrooms in this, this area right here.
What kind of vision do you have for this space?
That's a good question, and maybe that's why someone hasn't been there already. I know years ago we had talked about making this end, like some type of a STEM lab or. With any kind of takeaway. Ability to hold meetings or something like that in here with this.
And we have, you have in here four function ICB or three?
We have three.
Are we using all of them right now?
Two of them are current.
Okay, and I assume that if board members want or any staff wants to do some touring and.
Absolutely, yeah, we stick around.
All right, any other questions, board members?
Not a question, but I just want to say how fortunate our students are to have this. I grew up in rural Montana where this just wasn't even a thing, it was another rate, we made a kind of shop class, we made a full-encased, but we didn't have such a broad array of stuff for them, so. How fortunate for our students to have this here, so thank you, guys.
I'm going to. Oh, and graduated, Mr. Tyler Whitman. Back, you would attend, yes, you would. In terms of programming and interrupter asking. We already know this. This, is that a piece of this? So the center. Purple, so I think the kids, like you said, are very, you know, know what they love. The night, this is here.
And they don't realize until they're out of there, but yeah, that part's unfortunate. Yeah, it truly is. Fortunate to happen, very.
Since we have great industry, we will report this, but they'll get fostered or.
Well, technical, but I would tell you, that's how I got my first job out of college, was they hired me as a bookkeeper for one of the stores in Fargo, because I had been through, I was in this, two years in model office at that time and.
Good old model office.
Yeah. You know, and how to do a center, you know, so, I mean, it's been a long time, but.
Oh, we had Mrs. Warren.
Yeah.
It was a mess room, yeah.
Yeah. My step right over there.
And back behind that corner, there was a minion of fish.
Yes.
That smell. All right, thank you very much for your presentation and for your work on behalf of our students.
Glad you guys are able to monitor at least once a year.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Glad we do it.
Let's become for the food.
Yeah. All right. Never seen anything in the packet of the school board election, because it's not. Of the school board election dates, we, we need to, because of the timing, we need to officially set a date today of our June election. And for. The record, I think it will be that positions held by directors may go standing in support of the script. Anybody care to make any announcements while? So what, what is your recommendation to us?
I mean. We have to have a notice from the Oaks Times by ninety-four days before the election, so that would be somewhere in early March. And typically, you're, you're asked, what are we thinking? Well, either two, I think it's usually been held on a Tuesday and. At my elections class, they, at least their major school boards and a lot of schools do it to the second Tuesday of the month of June. From past, I think I discussed with Sonya a little bit out of their negotiations, that it was, we've done it the first Tuesday of June. So if either one of those, it doesn't, doesn't matter to me, but we need, I need, we have to have, we have to have a decision so that we can, if I can do it in the paper. So this, this year there will not be a primary election, a state election, so the, the second Tuesday of June is June thirteenth. The first day, Tuesday, is June the sixth. State law also requires that, it used to be. Nine days, I mean, it, it used to be nine days and now it's thirteen, forty days, thirteen days after. That's the day that the board has to meet to canvass the election, it's not within that many days, it's that day. So if we went with the thirteenth of June, that pushes our, our June meeting way up to the twenty-sixth. The canvassing date would have to be June twenty-sixth, if we did it June sixth, our canvassing date would be June nineteenth. And we could have a second meeting in June to do canvassing and have our regular one on the thirteenth. But I don't think anybody really wants to have extra meetings, we did enough of that last year, so. So how about the sixth? It isn't like it's the first of June, it is the sixth, so that gives us quite a few days after the end of school. And then it would put our June on the nineteenth, does that seem like a good plan?
Yes.
Okay, so I would be seeking a motion then to set our school board election date on, to be on June sixth of twenty twenty-three.
I'll make that motion.
Board votes to set the June twenty-three election date to the first, June sixth, is there a second?
Second.
Day seven. Is there any discussion? Questions for discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor say ayes. Ayes. It was a positive note. Emotion passes. Get the required notices in. Superintendent evaluation, no action to be taken on that today, I will get the packets out to you, it will be the same as what we did last fall. Thank you, this is self, for your very detailed self-evaluation and update on your goals, that's very much appreciated. And we were, we had talked last fall about revising that job description, revising the evaluation process. Because there is an up, more up-to-date process that's being promoted by school board association. And I think as we go through our B legendary meeting and we establish some district goals that will inform. The job description and the evaluation process for the school, for the superintendent for the next school year. So no action to be taken there, any questions or comments? Okay, if not, the next item on the agenda is the negotiation committee update. In your packet was included a list of our school district committees. As Mrs. Sell and Shannon and I were at the school board's association negotiating. That's just last week. We discussed that the committee listed in the packets includes, Sheila and I are board members on the committee. Mrs. Sell and Shannon are listed under the committee, but they're really not committee members, they are resources for both the board and the teaching negotiators. And I asked Mrs. Sell to go back and review the minutes whereby we appointed committees and you affirm for me that. The action was only to appoint myself and Sheila to that committee, so. All, even though they're listed there, they're not officially members of the committee, they're our resources as well as resources for. I would say, just to update, attending the negotiation seminar, I thought these sessions were very, very good, I think. No, Shannon also. I thought that. And we have been, you know, at the last meeting, we approved the negotiating body. And we have to have a meeting within thirty days and we have that meeting scheduled for next Monday morning. And I anticipate we'll do not much, but.
That's just.
It, it would require to have it and we'll maybe talk about some ground rules and we, we really don't get into the meat of negotiations. Until after we know what our funding will be for the next school year. In my time on the board, again, that's eleven years, I don't remember us ever specifically sending our negotiated agreement. To an attorney to be reviewed line by line. Mrs. Sell has done that and I think we'll be looking at some, maybe just some clarification things, looking at some history of what was discussed last time. And maybe trying to clean up some of. Some unintended consequences to some of that. Otherwise, any questions or comments about negotiations? All right, so that brings us to future meetings, okay, so. The science board bid opening is on February twenty-first. We also discussed at the negotiations conference that. We may want to at some time go into executive session for negotiating strategy. So. We're considering up, asking for a special board meeting sometime after the twenty-first. February to. Look at those science score bids and. We need to set that right now, but. Keep, keep that in mind that we may be looking for a special during that time.
I'll be gone, not available twenty-third.
I'm out of town, I've got skateboard on the twenty-seventh, so I would be looking at, like, the twenty-three through the thirty. We took it in March.
February.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We only, we only go there twenty-one.
Yeah, but I'm also going on February twenty-second. Let's have it on February thirtieth.
I'll be there.
Okay, so potentially. The twenty-eighth to the second, third, well, okay, and then. the twenty-eighth to the second, third, well, okay, and then we have, we have legendary between the third and fourth. The twenty, okay, tentatively the twenty. Do you have a ballpark, um, play for that be legendary?
I.
So that's a shutdown.
Yeah. Sounds like like from eight-five or eight-four on Friday and Saturday.
Okay.
Um, Brittany, Donnie just sent out, um, an email to them and to us, and she said, they're hard to contact and they're hard to get back to, so she feels like she's floating out here too, and she doesn't like it. But, um, yeah, we have.
If you get, if you can figure it out, or she can figure it out, that information, why don't you share it out with all of us? And of course, our plans are kind of on hold because, you know, we might not. Okay, so, and then, uh, the, the audit, which we had thought might be in agenda item today, will be. Any other future agenda items that anyone would like information about? Yeah, superintendent email will be, must be on the fourteenth, and we'll be not able to join. Okay, so, yeah, I'll get it out to you as soon as I come in. Everybody, please get them in to me. So the next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, March fourteenth at seven AM. And hoping one month ahead, it's looking at Tuesday, April the eleventh. That is at, just after Easter, and we do have school in session on Mondays.
No school on Monday. Monday is a TV day for teachers.
If we can stay for that, then we see with the teacher. Hey, anything else for the good of the order? If not, I'll declare the meeting adjourned at eight thirty-eight AM, and you're welcome to stay and cheer.